That not only me, and there's going to be seven more people without a job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Kevin Code. I live over in the city with my partner. We have been Airbnb hosts for over a year now, and we ran out of two bedrooms in our house. It's been a blast meeting people. But for me, the income has really become important. We're both getting older. We both work physical jobs. And the income we get from this has allowed us to back off from the other work that we're being, that we need to do. My partner's a gardener. I do small home repair. And it's huge. We've been self-employed forever, no pensions. So it's been a big deal for us. We also have an off-site rental unit that we do short-term rental on. And while I would prefer to be able to keep it short-term, I'm fine with turning it long-term. Thank you.
Thank you.
After, sorry, after Elizabeth, we'll have Sid Carlson, Gary Kaufman, and Kathy Cook.
Hi, I'm Elizabeth Dubuque. I'm a small homeowner in Ballard. I support my mother who can't afford her bills. And I support her through my Airbnb income. It also is going to help me plan better for my retirement, so I'm not in her position. I'd like you to consider that. Please don't make this legislation onerous for small business owners. We've heard from many of them. Make it fair, make it equitable. There's retirees that have second homes, third homes that are using this. You just heard from someone that is helping. Please support legislation that doesn't put small people, business owners and middle-class people, out of their, you know, out of their ability to have a good lifestyle. I'd also like you to consider the privacy issue for me. I have a business license. I pay for insurance. I'm following the rules that you are enacting. So let me give you my information myself. And, you know, just please consider everything you've heard and maybe, maybe open this up to a more fair, equitable solution. And look at the big businesses that are taking these homes really off the market that are that way.
Hi, my name is Sid Carlson. I'm a local business owner with four vacation rental properties in downtown Seattle. I started my business about two years ago with a proper business license and insurance, and I've paid all the proper taxes. I also have a couple employees that I pay above minimum wage to, and they're very happy to have a job with me right now. I've hosted about 1,000 guests over the past couple of years, and so far I've never received one complaint from any tenant or housing manager in the building. So it definitely hasn't caused any kind of disruption. Most of the neighbors are pretty happy to deal with the guest. I'd also like to add that I think right now, when Seattle is facing such a strong homelessness crisis, which is really the true housing crisis in Seattle, we can use the opportunity to take this .001 percent, such a small percentage of the whole housing market, that's taken by these short-term rentals and tax them, and use the money for people who could really need them.
Morning, Council. My name's Gary Kaufman. I've been reading in The Times about articles about what they're doing in Frisco and Houston for dealing with this homeless crisis in those respective cities. And in Houston, there's estimated 1,050 homeless people without shelter in the area, according to a recent count, down from 75% from 4418 in 2011. Now, here in Seattle, the number has tended to go in the opposite direction. This year's estimate tallied 4505 people without shelter, up 84% from 2442 in 2011. And Mr. Murray, our mayor, says, "I believe we can reform our system and get significant by better results." I don't think so. Too many large corporations here. And also in regards to that, ladies said, evil state of California. I tend to think that sometimes this city is evil too. I used to live in Southern California.
Thank you, Mr. Kaufman. Thank you.
After Kathy, we'll have Chris McDaniel, Jan Drybon, I can't read your last name, sorry, and Kelly Fernandy.
Hello, my name is Kathy Cook. I live in Belltown Court, and I really appreciate the City Council taking the time to address this issue. This is, the building that I live in is 245 starter-to-two-bedroom condos. And we have more than 50 short-term rentals. It's had a giant impact, and I'm really afraid for the safety of the residents of our building. When you think of starter condos versus two bedrooms, you don't think that Airbnb listings are going to say that they can sleep 10 and no additional charge for extra guests? We have one part-time security guard for two buildings. And the studios are sleeping four people for the tourists. The two bedrooms, up to 10 people. If there's an emergency, we have one security guard. How are the tourists and the residents going to stay safe? There are older residents living alone. There are people who have disabilities, and you should protect them, and this helps. Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Chris McDaniel. I operate a bed-and-breakfast-style short-term rental Ballard bunkhouse in Ballard. And to the lady's concern, I would certainly say, and I also own in a condominium, that go to your board. You have the power within your board to regulate your own condominium associations. So in my rentals, I house the gamut. I'm in Ballard. There are, there's one boutique hotel in Ballard. So there's life outside of the Belltown and Capitol Hill corridor and downtown, which you guys are trying to regulate, which is just infuriating, and it seems arrogant. But the, we house interns for Google, Microsoft, Amazon, people that are looking for housing, contract workers that can stay at the Fairmont Olympic through Boeing for $90 a night. But if they have a dog, they can't stay. So we've got tons of people that we're welcoming to the city. Ballard's an urban hub where it has, you know, density beyond belief with no parking. So it's just, Airbnb gives us a million dollars of insurance, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Hi. I own a four-plex on top of Queen Anne, one block off the avenue. I live in one unit, have included the other unit below me into my living space. It is available for my family and friends to stay in when they visit. When no family member is there, I rent it out as a VRBO. This arrangement allows for two things. It subsidizes the following. I rent one of my other apartments to an 89-year-old woman for $1,100, including utilities and off-street parking. The second is for $1,350, which includes utility and one off-street parking place. I am registered with the state, and I pay taxes. These are actually, there are actually three things that otherwise would not be possible for me. It provides a means for me to offer a comfortable place for my family. It gives me the income, which allows for affordable rents to my other two apartments, and it gives back to the city in the form of taxes.
Thank you.
After Kelly, we'll have Andre Zeta, Andrew Liu, and Rory O'Sullivan.
Hello, thank you for hearing all of us today. And my name is Kelly Fernandy. We operate a behind DADU backyard cottage in Ballard. And I will keep this very short because I am echoing many things said here today. But simply, we provide affordable short-term accommodations and affordable midterm housing. So somebody who wants a couple of months for renovation or is in town for a medical school clinical, they're not options for them. You have to sign a year lease, or there's nothing else out there. So it's been a financial boon for us with kids in college. And we support reasonable legislation. We will, you know, we are insured and registered, and we'll happily follow any of your recommendations that keep us all going forward.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Andre Zeta. I echo the same feelings and points being made. My concern is that I think there's a confusion on the quality of the market being introduced through Airbnb. That is not the same, that inventory is, has never been a candidate for affordable housing in the first place. It's not, there's higher investment. Tendency is much different. Therefore, it's not even the same inventory. Therefore, even if we had to revert to long-term, it would still be the high end of any kind of investment.
Hi, my name is Andrew Liu. I am on the, I've been on the board of interim for the last seven years. We are a community development organization. We build a football housing. We just built a 96 unit of football housing on Fourth and Main. It's a Hiribashi place. I am also an Airbnb host and VRBO owner, lister on there. I have a vacation home that my family stays at, and when they're not there, I rent it out for spaces. I echo a lot of the sentiment here. What I want to do is bring up some points. One is perspective. We have 150,000 rentals in Seattle. What we're talking about here is regulating about 300 to 800 units. It's a drop in the bucket. There's 1,000 units of rentals coming online every month from all this development that we have going on in Seattle. 1,000 units every month, and we're trying to control 300 to 500 units. This is a lot, a waste of kind of city resources to do that. I want to also point out, I want to point out that there are bad actors. I would say regulations should be focused on those that ran out apartment buildings and then relist them. They list like five units, they just ran out. Should prevent people from renting out apartments and then relisting them on the gray market.
Thank you. Thank you.
So after, after Rory, we'll have our last two speakers, Melissa Flynn and Hannah Crabtree.
Good morning. My name is Rory O'Sullivan. I'm managing attorney for the Housing Justice Project. And displacement is not just something that we read about. Displacement is something that we see every single day with people being evicted. So our greatest concern is ensuring that the housing supply for long-term rentals is protected. Now, and we've seen an increase in the need for our services as the Housing Justice Project every single year, and this year has seen the greatest increase. So displacement is a concern that we deal with every single day. We really appreciate the City Council's efforts on this legislation and consider what we can do to ensure housing supply, both in the form of taxes to increase affordable housing and in ensuring that we don't decrease the supply of long-term rental housing. So thank you so much for taking this opportunity to ensure that we protect the housing market for Seattle. Thank you.
Yes, good morning. My name is Melissa Flynn. I live on Cherry Hill with my wife, and I bought my first home 21 years ago in Ballard. It's a duplex. And in 2006, I moved in with my wife in our 1903 home, and we have been paying on both of those. We were on adjustable rate mortgages, and after 10 years, I was finally able to refinance both of the homes because we had the income from Airbnb and VRBO. My Ballard duplex, I have a permanent tenant. He's lived there for years, and he loves where he lives. And his rent is subsidized by the income from the rental next door. I am keeping that property. That is my retirement. I work for myself. I'm a private chef, and we run these places where people rent. I'm a super host. We are super hosts on Airbnb. We've had over 400 rentals. People love us. You can look us up on Airbnb. They write amazing reviews. This has helped us be able to afford our homes in Seattle and be able to breathe enough to buy services like funding contractors.
Hello, my name is Hannah Rose Crabtree. I designed and built a tiny house on wheels. I've been running that for over years in Airbnb. It was my entire source of income, and it was going to be my mother's retirement. The city of Seattle called me a couple weeks ago to tell me that I needed to stop renting immediately. I could not rent out what they considered an RV as a short-term rental. The thousands of short-term rentals running in Seattle are all currently violating local code, but you've decided to give them a path to compliance rather than shut them down. Your current legislation will shut down any short-term rental that was not permitted and built to code for long-term renting. I am here on behalf of all the tiny houses, RVs, houseboats, yurts, tents, and other unconventional vacation rentals to have a path to compliance as well. We are CL residents. We are small business owners, and we are desperate to survive and stay sheltered ourselves.
Came down today and shared your opinions with us. As I said at the beginning, we're beginning our consideration of these matters, and this will continue well into July, and we appreciate your perspective and your comments. We're now going to have a presentation on these proposed regulations, so I would invite those presenters to come up and join us, please. Let's begin with introductions, please.
Good morning. Ali Penucci with Council Central staff.
I'm David Mendoza, Senior Policy Advisor in the Mayor's Office of Policy Innovation. All right.
It takes a minute to warm up.
Okay. Okay, all right, there we go. All right, we'll just jump right in on just a little bit of background before we get into the details of the policy. We've seen a large growth of short-term rental. Short-term rentals, as noted, has been a longtime use, usually done through classifieds and newspapers and then Craigslist. But I think with the on, beginning of more platforms like Airbnb and VRBO and HomeAway, all platforms that Council staff and myself have been engaging with, we've seen an explosive growth in this use of this type of rental units. Airbnb itself has grown steadily since 2009, more than doubling every year, according to its own website. You know, it started with $20,000 in seed grants and is now $1.5 billion in venture capitaling. Its total valuation is about $25.5 billion right now. The number of guests using Airbnb has grown steadily, more than doubling, with visitation doubling every year. And with this explosive growth, their interest is wanting to stay ahead of this issue before it reaches a crisis kind of level like we've seen happen in cities like San Francisco. We do see, we definitely, the benefits of Airbnb are clear from both our perspective and as we've heard today from many of the testimony, people are able, the supplemental income allows people to afford mortgages and stay in their homes. And that is a worthwhile use of people's homes that we do not wish to abridge. It allows for more efficient use of housing stock, and it is a less expensive use for large groups visiting this, our city. And so they can spend more on, at local businesses and not just on the housing that they use while in the city. But there are challenges. Housing units are being removed. We've heard from tenants themselves who were evicted. We've heard stories of whole floors and apartment buildings who have been used, and then just some of the negative consequences of a large gatherings or parties at houses that are impacting the quality of life for the neighborhood surrounding some rental unit, short-term rental units.
Have we been collecting data on the, the Airbnbs that were actually occupied by tenants as opposed to the types of Airbnbs where we've heard of people buying vacant buildings and renovating them?
So there's no formal way to track that data. And so we've had anecdotal information from people who approach us or as we're in the community ourselves, we, people come up to us, but there's no systematic way for a landlord who has a long-term rental to then register differently with a short-term rental. This program, the policy we're introducing, might be able to help us track that going forward, but currently there's no system in place for that.
I think under the Tenant Relocation Assistance Ordinance, that would be considered a change of use, and tenants in such a building would be eligible for, at least if income eligible, and groups of renters in houses often aren't because their income is pulled for determining eligibility. But they, that would be information that DPD would have in those instances that those tenants were made aware of their rights. So it might be worth checking with DPD about.
We have been working with DCI on that, and?
Yeah, we can follow, we can follow up with SDCI. I'm not, because right now the use isn't defined. It might not be considered a change of use, but I will confirm that, and then we can try to see if we can sort through that data a little bit.
Well, related to that, under just cause, there, you have to have a reason to terminate the tenancy of a tenant. And so, and I was just assuming that change of use would be the reason under just cause. If not, then I would ask folks who are converting those, what reason they're giving tenants to move.
Yeah, I'll follow up with that.
So just like to touch on the current regulatory environment. In terms of zoning, with limited exceptions, bed-and-breakfasts have to be in commercial lodging. Our commercial lodging uses not allowed in residential zones. Those bed-and-breakfasts that are allowed in commercial zones have to have a business license, adhere to dispersion requirements, establish quiet hours, must be operated by the principal owner, the owner must live on site, bunch of regulations actually, we'll touch on a little bit, we're working on simplifying those as well. Yes, sir.
In public comment, someone talked about a lawsuit where they said they prevailed and that a use was a residential use. Do you know what that referred to, or?
Ali can, or?
So the land use code currently doesn't define what a, what a short-term rental is, so it is a, it's sort of a use without a, without a category. So in that situation, when the land use code doesn't speak to it, it was, you know, what is this most like? And at that point, it was, it was determined to be a residential use because the city hadn't taken the steps to define it and categorize it and then regulate it.
Got it. And so would this, would the legislation that we're anticipating define this as a commercial use or residential use?
Correct. It would define it in the category of lodging uses, which includes bed-and-breakfast, hotel motels, that type of thing. Yeah. So it would have two pieces, a land use code component as well as the regulatory license piece.
So other requirements on the current regulatory environment, so the business occupation tax. Anyone renting their own home or parts of their home are required to get a city business license tax certificate. Of note, I'd like to say that, that that information is publicly available currently. And if you apply for a business license required, all that information is publicly available. I've heard some comments about concerns about the requirements of disclosure from platforms. That does not change what the current state of law is. So?
The business license regulations have been in place for decades, so we're not, we're not changing that.
That is exactly true.
Do we currently do any enforcement on, I heard a lot of folks here say that they have a business license, they pay their taxes, those things. But do we do any enforcement on short-term rentals that don't have business licenses?
We don't, we don't have a way to track if they're registered on Airbnb or VRBO or HomeAway, and if they have a business license as well. That's part of the reasoning for the proposed regulations is in order to see, ensure that those folks who are listed on those websites do have a business license.
Now it'd be complaint-based.
Exactly right.
Yeah, there have been a few instances, at least that I'm aware of, where there have been complaints, and the code enforcement has looked at whether or not they have a business license to verify that they're following that rule. Yeah.
And the concern I heard wasn't that people are, don't want to apply for a business license and have their, the fact that Joe Smith has a business license. The concern I heard was about location of their homes and layout.
So the place of their business would be their home, and that address is publicly available. The layout of the home is not required to, as part of the business licensing.
And what about the issue of folks staying with them? They, I thought I heard somebody talk about having to provide the names of guests.
No, that is not a requirement.
And not proposed in these regulations either.
No, exactly.
Ali or David, as we have individuals that are participating in the bed-and-breakfast marketplace or other short-term rentals, as they, as they get into the business and occupation tax, is there any Seattle Department of Construction and inspections, inspections that we do on those properties to verify that they're following code and regulation? Do we ask people to sign a document stating that their house is up to code or regulation?
So currently for short-term rentals, we don't really know where they are, what they're operating. So no, there isn't currently a inspection or any sort of process to verify that. Bed-and-breakfasts are regulated at a number of levels, and they are required to get, you know, health and safety, the food service type of license from the county and the state, so they have inspections associated with that. Within this proposal, we would be asking that short-term rental operators certify that their, their building meets the standards based on our rental registration and inspection ordinance. And then if, and also post information about where hosts, or excuse me, guests would call if they see a sort of housing code issue when they're staying in the home, so post a notice, call the city. And then at that point, the city could come out and inspect. But we are asking the operators to look at the checklist, verify that they meet the basic housing code standards, and then give guests an opportunity to notify the city if there isn't, if they aren't meeting this.
Would we also require, Ali, the way that we have with the current rental registration ordinance, a follow-up inspection every five years to ensure compliance? Isn't that the timing of what we've got now for folks who participate?
Within the rental registration and inspection ordinance, yeah, inspections are required on a, I think every five, yeah, every few years. I will get a more certain number, but this legislation wouldn't require inspections. It would be requiring that, like I said, operators confirm with us, and then it would be complaint-based.
Self-certified.
It would be self-certified, which is what happens when landlords register today, but then on a long-term rental, but it is followed up with an inspection at some point.
And the reason for that difference is the dynamic in the short-term rental market, we think, is different. If you're a long-term tenant, there are probably a number of reasons why you wouldn't want to file a complaint or might have hesitation about filing a complaint. But if you're a short-term resident, I mean, we think the market will take care of most of the more serious issues. But if you're unhappy with your experience and there's a major safety issue with your place, you're probably much more likely to report it.
And write a bad review.
Just want to touch on some of the taxes collected through a lodging. The State Department of Revenue handles tax collection in this area. It's our sales tax. 2% of that sales tax is the lodging tax. Airbnb is collecting that tax on behalf of its hosts. We're unsure about compliance from other online platforms like VRBO and HomeAway. No platform, online platforms, to our knowledge, are collecting the convention center tax, and that's for room, hotels with 60-plus rooms.
The city business license? I thought I heard you say, Ali, that we don't know where these places are right now, and I heard several people say that they have city business licenses. So wouldn't we know?
We, so for, we don't know, we don't have a sort of master list of all the people who are registered on these platforms offering short-term rentals. So we know who has a business license, and right now, the way it's categorized, we may be able to tell that it's a lodging use. I've started to sort through that data, and I haven't identified nearly as many people who are listed.
Coding issue?
There's a, there's also, there's a coding issue, but it's also that we have no way to check against the sort of platforms list of operators to know whether or not all of their hosts have come to the city and gotten a business license. So that information would be incredibly helpful for us to know whether or not people are following the rules today.
Our standard business license doesn't require you list the specific types of businesses you're, you're running through your business license, and you can have multiple lines of business with one business.
I remember that coming up on some other issues as well.
Yes.
So David, on this slide, current regulatory and taxation environment. I stay for the night at an Airbnb versus a night at a local hotel. Talk to me about the difference between my bills. Is the bill exactly the same or both? As a, as a, somebody who's spending the night, am I getting the same bill?
It's depending on the cost of the room. The additional cost from a taxation perspective would be both the lodging, would be really the, the 7% convention center tax. Hotels are paying that for sure. If you have 60-plus rooms, that is being paid by the hotel itself, or as part of, it's incorporated into your price. But the lodging tax, which is a percentage, a 2% percentage of the overall sales tax, is, is being paid on behalf of their host by Airbnb. We're not sure the compliance by VRBO or HomeAway. So that your price might, your price might be as low as 9% less at an online platform than it is at your local hotel.
If you're, if you're staying at a boutique hotel that's under 60 rooms, you would only be paying the 9.6% on top of your bill, and that's the same as what you should be paying at a short-term rental.
So what I think I hear you're saying is that in, in most of the major hotels, i.e. So what I think I hear you saying is that in most of the major hotels, i.e. 60 rooms or above, there's an additional percentage, I think you said 7%.
7% on top of the sales tax.
And that's a sort of convention center?
That's right. It's helped to fund the expansion, I believe, of the convention center.
And then for everybody else in the city, you're paying, at least we would hope, whether, regardless of your platform, we hope you're paying the 9.6% sales tax, portion of which goes back to the county to be a portion back to the city?
Yeah, that 2% goes to stadium bonds. I think we're still paying the Kingdom with it, for it, and that expires in 2021. And then it can be used for cultural tourism and affordable housing.
Okay. So who sets that 60-unit threshold on the differentiation between the marketplace here?
All these statutes are in state law.
So the state sets that 60% statute or?
And they determine the uses of where the money can go as well.
And if you, if, I guess sort of where I'm getting at here with the macro level question, you know, if you're going to a boutique hotel that you outlined, Nate, where you've got, you know, less than 10 rooms, I'm presuming you would go to that hotel's website as opposed to sort of a broader marketplace. I'm curious about the regulatory environment and I'd love to explore more at a future meeting. I would imagine that most of the folks who are coming to stay at a short-term rental are going to what would be a more macro website, kind of akin to what you would do when you're going to stay at a larger hotel. You're going to the Airbnb website, you're going to the VRBO website, you're going to the HomeAway website, just like you would go to Expedia or other website to stay at a larger chain hotel. That seems to be an apples-to-apples comparison if we're thinking about regulation of the marketplace. So it's strange to me that we wouldn't be collecting that percentage differentiation for what we would see as a, what I would see as sort of a marketplace-to-marketplace, apples-to-apples comparison. So I'd love to explore a little bit more how we could think about the marketplace by which you get access to these units and whether or not that's applicable to that 60-unit threshold or not.
Yeah, I think that's a question we could take up with the state. Essentially, how do they define? What I hear you saying is that maybe Airbnb is like a hotel in the sense that the total number of rooms on Airbnb is clearly over 60 and should that tax apply?
Yeah.
Up on that, I heard a number of folks in public comment today say, you know, I'm an Airbnb host, I'm running a small business, but I want to support affordable housing. Tax us to help pay for affordable housing. Do we, beyond the sales tax, which hopefully they're already paying, do we have authority to do any sort of other kind of lodging or licensing tax?
That would, it would take a state law to create more authority for the City of Seattle to create a new tax. We could, you know, just off the top of my head, we would need to create a regulatory license and put another fee on top of that, basing that fee on how many nights are rented.
Yeah, but that would be, if that were a regulatory fee, that would just cover administration of the program, which we might want to do, but that wouldn't, we couldn't use that to fund affordable housing.
That's right.
And so we don't have an affordable housing.
I don't think we have a legal mechanism in order to tax people more to fund affordable housing.
We can ask all these folks in the audience to come with us to Olympia this winter.
On the issue of the platform collecting the tax to pay the sales tax?
Yes.
We know that Airbnb is doing so. I'm assuming we've asked, they've demonstrated that they're doing so and that somehow what they're collecting reflects the numbers of units that they have on their platform. Have we asked the same question from HomeAway and VRBO and Expedia?
So that Airbnb is completely voluntary compliance. They approached the Department of Revenue themselves. I'm not sure about the exact methodology in which they're submitting that, but I believe it's based on their own estimation of nights rented. And we have engaged Airbnb.
When I talked to the Department of Revenue, they said they hope that's a model they can then take to the other platforms.
Those platforms don't have it currently?
As of last time I talked to them, which was a few months ago.
So they acknowledge they are not paying this tax?
Well, I think individual owners could still choose to do that, submit the taxes on their own. Yeah.
It's pretty high compliance right there.
One more, going back real quick to the zoning question, one more thing that I should note is that the proposal that we are talking about mainly affects residential zones. So a lodging use, if short-term rentals were to be defined clearly as a lodging use, that would still be allowed in commercial zones. And there's a couple of examples of those types of uses already in neighborhoods and neighborhood commercial zones. And so that would be a legal pathway moving forward after this legislation.
Yeah, and in those cases, we have seen like a change of use or a permit that converted the space to a lodging use.
I think that's a really important point that we keep in mind, that we're talking about short-term rentals in residential zones of the city.
So the proposed legislation would not in any way regulate short-term rentals in non-residential zones?
If they are in a, for example, a neighborhood commercial zone where that kind of use is allowed, then this would not have an impact.
So we would still not be regulating that market in any way?
Okay. I would just like to jump into a little bit of the goals behind this legislation. And as you see, the balance we're trying to maintain is between maintaining affordable long-term rental housing stock with economic opportunity to provide short-term rentals. We do want to note that short-term rentals are, we're clearly not the primary driver of our housing shortage, but we do think it is exasperating some of the crisis. Hundreds of units coming off the market would cost tens of millions of dollars to replace through funding, tax mechanisms, which we currently don't have. So there is an impact and it's growing. The long, as we noted earlier, the growth of the short-term rental market. And so we're trying to get ahead versus react after the fact. Our secondary goals would be level the playing field. Primarily, the traditional bed and breakfasts have a higher regulatory burden than the new model under the online rental platforms. And so we want to ensure that they can compete a little bit more competitively that way. We also want to ensure, protect the rights and safety of owners, neighbors, guests by some very reasonable regulations around occupancy, meeting minimum standards and emergency contacts.
So I have the privilege of jumping into the details with you. There's a lot here, so let me know if you have questions along the way. This table here shows the basic framework of our regulations. Well, and the subsequent slides, we'll get into more detail, but just to give an overview that we're making a distinction between when the short-term rental operator resides onsite and when they do not. And then we also have a number of nights threshold that we are proposing to be 90 cumulative nights of short-term rentals. And it's important to define here what is a short-term rental stay. So under this proposal, a short-term rental stay would be any stay under 30 nights in duration. And that mirrors other pieces of our code, like our business tax code, which makes a distinction between under 30 days is taxable as a business activity, over 30 days is not. So there is at least.
On-site, are you speaking of a piece of property or a structure? So just wondering about the ADU or the DADU issue.
Yeah. We are defining for residences with an attached dwelling unit or detached accessory dwelling unit, an in-law apartment or a backyard cottage. We are considering the primary residency to kind of be an umbrella that extends over all of those units. What it would not do though is in a multifamily zone, if you live in one condo building or one condo unit in a building, it would not extend over other units in that same building.
So I think a key point here is that if the stay is 30 days or, excuse me, if the stay is 30 days or longer, it does not count toward the 90-day calculation.
That's a long-term rental.
That's a long-term rental.
Yeah, there's at least. Other housing rules apply to it, right?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, and I think there is some testimony about kind of the midterm stays of.
Cancer patients or?
Yeah, or doctors or people in residencies or that sort of thing. And we think, or folks who are moving into the city and need a place for a month before they find long-term housing. And we think there's a real housing need for residents in that kind of one-month, two-month, three-month range.
And the microhousing units, the, you know, the Apodments is one of the brand names. I know that, at least for a while, a lot of those start with a one-month lease or just go month to month immediately. But those, again, because it's at least a month, those are long-term rentals and are governed by our other housing rules.
Correct. Yeah.
I just, at least on this one I went to on VRBO, they're charging sales tax at 9.6%. So.
So in the.
They heard you. They just added that, right?
In the orange box, so what happens?
I think we'll get there in a second. Okay. On the next slide, the, just want to talk briefly about when you're above the line and you're under 90 nights a year. The short story here is that you will see no new regulations. And that we, according to data from, we got from Airbnb, about 80% of their listings are under 90 nights a year. That's where we are getting the 80% figure that we have shared. We've asked VRBO for similar numbers. They haven't given us that breakdown, but they did give us their average number of nights rented on their units. And I'm forgetting the exact number, but I believe it's around 50. So if you're under 90 nights, you still need to follow existing legal requirements, as we've talked about, which is paying the applicable taxes and obtaining a city business license. But by setting this threshold, it's really trying to achieve the balance that we're going for in these regulations, where we're not having an overly burdensome, heavy-handed regulatory approach and allowing some flexibility. And we know there's a lot of churn in this industry. People try it for a little bit and they decide they don't want to do it. We don't want to have all of those folks go through the city's process to get a special regulatory license. We want to kind of let the market play that out.
Nate, I'd be curious how we landed at 90. Why not 120? Why not 180? Why not 45? How do we end up at that 90 figure?
So there's a couple of underlying policy goals when coming to a figure. The first is we want the number to be low enough that for folks who have a, are motivated by financial considerations, that they will make more money on the long-term housing market with their units. And so we think 90 is low enough that there's a significant difference between what you can get from a year-long lease versus 90 days of short-term rentals. And so that's why we are trying to, we're trying to get under that level. But we're also not setting it just at zero because we don't want to, we want to try to avoid capturing the natural churn, as we've talked about, and allowing some flexibility. Clearly, the number of days is a policy choice for council to make and we expect there to be discussions. Some folks might want to go higher, some lower.
When we do that estimate based on those calculations, you sort of, the way that I'm going to rephrase that is that what we're trying to do is incentivize as many people as we can to convert short-term rentals to long-term rentals.
Correct.
What's, based on this 90-day threshold, what's our estimate about how many folks would take us up on that sort of financial incentive?
Well, I think if you're motivated purely by the finances with 90 days, everyone would make more money, or nearly everyone would make more money with a year-long lease as opposed to 90 days of short-term rentals.
Okay.
So, so. Can I?
Hey, folks, that's not going to work, so knock it off.
First thing, I want to disclose that I have both stayed and hosted through Airbnb and all, make sure all my paperwork is filled out there for disclosure rules. I have a question about the regulatory operator's license and what that would look like. To me, having gone through listing a place, there's a fair amount of work to get the place in order. And then we would also require someone to give a business license, which, you know, is pretty straightforward, but a little bit of paperwork. It seems like the marginal threshold to just have them get an operator's license or check a box on the business license that says they're doing this. I'd be interested in exploring how to make that a relatively low burden, but capture that so that we actually know what this world looks like as opposed to just the folks over 90 days. So as we move forward, I'd love to understand what options are there for getting that, you know, how burdensome do we anticipate that nine, over 90 days operator's license to be and is there a way to make that streamlined and part of it? Because this feels a little bit like kind of a wink and nod, get a business license, but once you get to 90 days, we're getting serious. And I want to make sure that even if, you know, you're doing this for a day, you're following the rules and we have some way to track it as opposed to just assume it's okay. But, you know, it doesn't need to be terribly burdensome. We just need to know what's going on.
One more piece on the threshold question, the kind of the break-even point of how many nights you need to do a short-term rental to make as much as a year-long lease really depends on the neighborhood and the size of the unit. And so we've started to do some looking in terms of what are the, where that is depending on your size, and we can share more of that data later. One more piece says the, for the primary residents or people under 90 nights that won't see any new regulations. One thing that I would add is they might also see a slight uptick in business activity under these regulations. If you consider the demand as consistent and the more commercial operations are closed down, then people will be funneling more towards the primary residence operators. So what happens if you hit the 90-night threshold? If you do not reside onsite, as Councilmember Herbald, as you were asking about earlier, you would no longer be able to continue renting for that year. So under this proposal, there's no allowance for year-round commercial rentals.
So I'm just, my question is practically for the owner, that means they must become a landlord or they have, they shutter the building?
I think, I mean, they would have up to 90 nights a year that they could do through short-term rental. They could opt to put that unit on the long-term rental market. They could opt to go to more sort of 30, 60, 90-day leases, so still have some flexibility to have that unit available. But yeah, they would have to make a choice.
I could certainly see moving forward a regulatory environment where we say to people, if you're going to get into this business, these are our rules. But I really have a problem with forcing people to become landlords who are currently in this business that may not want to be landlords. I think that.
That's their choice.
But it, or they leave their building closed. And I think that potentially could create a very toxic landlord-tenant relationship. Landlords are, don't have any other, I don't want to say it again because I don't want the, I'm concerned about the uproar, or the relationship that that could create between landlords and tenants if people for the rest of the year have to be landlords in order to have an option other than shuttering their home. And I.
You say shuttering, I guess I don't, like.
Closing it.
Their home, like?
Or not their home, their property.
She's talking about the off-site, non-resident user who is.
It's hard for me to ma, I'm trying to understand the scenario in which someone's just going to leave a place vacant at a.
Well, there, it sounds like they have two choices. They either leave the place vacant or they become a long-term landlord for the rest of the year. And I can imagine some people, or they could sell the property.
Yeah. I mean, I think, I think folks that are doing short-term rentals are a landlord of type also. I mean, they're, you know, whether someone's renting for a day or three weeks or a month, I mean, we can use a different term and legally we do, but it's a similar operation.
Yeah, I think the obligations and responsibilities of a landlord are very different from that of an operator of short-term housing.
Let's keep going.
Convictions and just cause and tenant relocation assistance ordinance.
So that's an interesting, valid point, and that's what you and all of us will have to weigh what, where we're going to place the value on preserving, allowing folks to take advantage of the economic benefits that these online rental platforms provide versus protecting long-term rentals in the city. And I think, you know, in our conversation in your committee yesterday, we were talking about discriminatory policies as landlords and how we want to prevent those. And the question came up about what applies to Airbnb. And I believe, you know, I think it's a gray area, but I heard from our Office of Civil Rights that the same type of discrimination rules should be applying to platforms like this.
Oh, absolutely, under public accommodations.
Yeah, and I think some of.
Just like a grocery store.
Right. And so I think some of the burdens that you identify that come with landlords because that's a significant business we're well aware of, probably also apply to short-term rentals and we just haven't got into the regulatory business of that. But I hear from friends who say, I have trouble renting on Airbnb because my name sounds like I'm an immigrant and people turn me down all the time. And now I don't know how to demonstrate that, but that is clearly an experience and that's a problem. And so there's. And so there's, we may be getting into that space as we go through this, too.
Can I, can I ask just one question, David, about the, or to Nate or to Ally, about this sort of final bullet, no year-round commercial listings? Is that intended to get at what we've heard about, at least in anecdotal instances, where a commercial entity comes in and buys up an apartment building and effectively turns the entire apartment building into short-term Airbnb-type rentals?
I think the distinction we're making is between people who live in their own home and are using their own home for revenue for whatever purpose, versus folks who are running a business activity on an external property and doing that year-round.
Is there, is there some sort of, I mean, I think one of the things that I'm concerned about is how do we get at those bad actors, as I think some people called them during public comment? So maybe there's a consideration here for a threshold question? You know, if you've got a certain number of locations on a particular site that are listed, then, you know, maybe we, we prohibit above or below a certain number of units within a building, or something along those lines. You know, I think that there's some. You know, I haven't seen any demonstrated figures, but, you know, these stories don't get to us probably because they're made up. So let's, if we can, try to identify some of those, either using the existing platforms to help determine what might be some of those bad actors, and maybe do some analysis about what we could do to help prevent that kind of action from taking place.
Yeah.
Before we keep going, I want to announce that Agenda Item Number Three relating to the Department of Neighborhoods will be rescheduled to a later time.
So we've talked about what happens when you're living offsite, but if you are the primary resident of the unit, that, at least a portion of which you're doing as a short-term rental, either a spare bedroom or the entire house when you're out of town, you will be able to do that year-round. I think there was some confusion about this in public testimony, but there will be no limit to the number of nights you could do out of your primary residence. You will, if you cross that 90-night threshold, under this proposal, would need to get a new license. And on the next slide, it details what the requirements of that license would be. The, the main purpose of this license, I think, is to distinguish the primary residence factor and be able to say who's, who's living onsite and who is not. There are a few other pieces that are proposed to be a part of it, some sort of insurance requirement, requirement that you provide local contact information. This is actually a requirement for long-term landlords as well. Requirement that you post emergency information in the unit for the guests who are staying there, so if there's an emergency, they can look somewhere very quick and know what the address is of where they're staying. And also that, as we talked earlier, that you sign a declaration saying that the unit meets the applicable building and safety codes. The last piece of this puzzle is a license for the platforms that are operating short-term rentals, and platform is a term we're using for companies like Airbnb, VRBO. Under this license, there's really two, just two requirements. One is that you provide information to your operators about what Seattle's regulations are. I think a lot of them do that already. And the other is that we are asking that they share basic data with the city on a quarterly basis. And, again, it's not data about guests or, or layout of your house. It is essentially contact name, address of the listing, and the number of nights it's been rented in that last quarter. And for the first two, that, those are information, that's information that if people are proactively doing, or following the rules and getting a business license, that will be public already. And the reason why we ask for this data is, it's kind of, this whole framework relies on getting the data in terms of the number of nights. That's what allows for the flexibility in this framework, and our approach is considerably more flexible than what many other cities have proposed, but that flexibility requires the cooperation in the data. And if, if there becomes problems with getting the data, I think in order to have a more realistic enforcement scheme, we'll need to look at taking away a threshold or having a more clear distinction between onsite and offsite, if you're going with that same method.
Yeah, I, I appreciate that, Nate, and I, I've talked to elected officials in other jurisdictions who've, I've been ahead of us on this. And one of the things I heard from a city in California was, you know, from a policy perspective, we would actually like to have a nuanced policy here. There's certain, certain types of rentals we want to support and others we don't. But we couldn't figure out how to do that because we didn't have the data, and we didn't have the assurances from the platform that there would be transparency. And so for us, we felt like we had to decide, did we want to go all-in or all-out? And we went, you know, whatever that means. They went, they decided to go to a very heavily regulated because they didn't have the data. And I think what I heard you saying is if we can create a place where we have good data, where we're understanding what's happening in our communities, what that means to the long-term rental market, if there's tension there, how many units there are, are people paying, playing by the rules, are they safe? We can develop a nuanced policy that I think hopefully can be multiple objectives that we lay out here. And if we find that there's a lack of transparency, we're constantly fighting to get data, we really don't know what's going on, and we're just have to kind of trust that the market's going to take care of it, that creates more of a problem where we may need to do stricter regulation, so.
This also points out the need for why we want to have the special license and also the cooperation of the rental platforms, as, as you said, Councilmember O'Brien. You know, we, we considered, you know, what if you owned your primary residence and you had one other? You know, how could we accommodate that? And we've heard a lot of comment, both today and over the last several months, from individuals who own two properties in the city, and, you know, they, they want to do that for the economic benefits that that gives them on these rental platforms. But the city doesn't have the ability to monitor.